Board of Education, um, meeting for March the 20th. And Nancy, will you call roll please?
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Dr. Corley?
Here.
Mrs. Dorr?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mrs. James?
Here.
Mrs. Miller absent. Mr. Rungy?
Here. Alright, let's have the pledge of allegiance. Uh, Mr. Wilson, will you lead us?
Of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Before we get into the agenda, I want to address the audience just real quick. I know that some of you are here probably, a lot of you are here for just one issue. If you decide to leave, I'm going to ask that you leave through the back door back here. And please do so quietly if you leave during the meeting, okay? We've had people leave before through here and talking. It's very disruptive, so. Okay, uh, the next item of business is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Grody, are there any changes to the agenda?
I would like to have two changes. The first one is new business number eight, review of student fees. I'd like to move that up to number one. So, once we make the decision on that, we can start making copies. Um, and then I would also like to pull number nine, facility usage by Egyptian Electric Cooperative. That can just be stricken.
Okay, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Alright, then we need to approve the agenda as amended. I will accept the motion to do so.
Some of them.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is the approval of the consent agenda. What includes? District 186 regular board meeting minutes dated 2/20/18. Tri-County regular board minute meetings, meeting minutes dated 2/14/18. Tri-County bills for March of 2018, applications and reports. And I will accept the motion to approve the consent agenda. In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is the approval of District 186 bills for March 2018. Are there any questions from the board?
I have a few.
Please, if you would, let us know the page number that you're on.
Um, let's see. Page one, City of Murfreesboro, says FY17, 4,025. I was curious why it says FY17 and not FY...
Auxiliary Police is actually calendar year 2017. We don't get billed until, um, typically February for our auxiliary police.
So, it's calendar year, not FY. Calendar year, not FY.
Calendar year 2017, correct.
Oh, the Elks Lodge, uh, page three.
We have, uh, a couple workers that work through one of our, our staff grant program. Uh, it's, uh, one of our special ed teachers has a, a program she receives funding from the state and places students throughout the community. And in that case, um, the Elks pays the students and we reimburse the Elks for that grant program.
Okay.
The student workers.
Last one, sorry.
It's okay.
You're fine.
Page five, time sheets. Are we still using paper time sheets?
We are.
And then, like, an electronic?
Um, we are, um, at some point looking to, um, change our accounting systems to a, um, web-based system. We currently don't have a web-based system. So, um, we can do that in the future. Then we were probably looking at trying to get to, uh, time sheets at that point.
Okay.
But currently, we're, we're still doing paper time sheets. What kind of questions I have?
Any other questions from the board?
I have, I have one.
Okay, what page?
Page three, um, the second, page three. Oh, wait, should go forward. The second page three. Uh, there's a kindergarten software, what is that? ESGI?
That is the new, um, Carla, the standard-based recording.
Yeah, the report card, that's what they use, um, it's the new report card that they use, standard-based, yeah.
Report card, and to use it for screening as well?
And screening and it's everything, yeah.
Is it part of the kids assessment or completely separate?
They use it, that's separate, for assessments, so.
And there's a...
But they use a lot of that for that, so.
There's a cost per teacher on that for, for each user.
There will be.
Yeah, that is, that is, that's the cost for each, each unit basically, for each teacher. That's it. That's all I have.
I have two, Dr. Elbow. Um, my first question is the first page three. Oh, we got a, a big chunk for West Bus, and I know that those roll in in groups, but this is for August, September?
Right, those are, um, the, the things that are outside, um, the contract, the usual charges in the contract, things, uh, the extra trips, um, and some of those would just take more time to go through and, and make sure, you know, double-check all those bills.
Really? Nine months, or whatever, August to now?
September, it would've been September through, um, January, charges. Actually, January, we didn't receive until after we paid the last bill, so that is a delay thing.
Okay. Um, and then on one other page, sevens, this, I guess, more for, Mr. Grody, we paid the fence company 7,000 to take out the fence at the high school tennis court?
Yeah, to, to remove the...
Right, million?
Yes.
It was also taking the, the posts out, the concrete, grating off, taking the posts off, and that ended up being a, a lot bigger, um, adventure, I think, than, than they anticipated.
Okay.
And they took the fence out originally, had to come back and do that, that extra work later before we paid for that bill.
And we held, we held the pay until they got the concrete out, 'cause that's what they bid for and they just...
Fill those spots back in, yeah.
So, the bid was 7,200?
Yeah. And then it was just a matter of us holding on to the check until they finally came back to get the concrete out, so.
Was that the only bid you got for that?
Um, I believe so. Terran, the, one of the issues we're having with our fencing is, is Terran's fencing is the, I guess, for cutting them out, we could've gotten another contract or whatnot, but, so, yeah, that is the only...
Alright, I just, we're just saying, we assumed that that was cheap enough.
Yeah.
I forgot I had another one. Sorry, were you finished?
I am.
$520,000 to the community foundation, what's that? That's, uh, we received, well, actually, the, the district didn't receive it, it was a, um, a foundation, like, scholarship.
We got contacted early this year, it was a scholarship, and so that's the one...
So, this is you moving it over to that?
Yes.
Right, okay, got it.
'Cause they sent us the check and it was, uh, they were supposed to send it to the Southern Illinois Community Foundation.
The check was written to Moses for a high school, and Mr. Wilson delivered it to me, and I said, "Wait, what?" So, so they'll be administering the, um, all the scholarships to that foundation.
Next year, we'll be the first scholarship for that, uh, for that trust.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, if not, then I will entertain a motion to approve District 186 bills for March of 2018. In a second? Nancy?
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Item number seven is communications.
I have three.
Okay.
Dear Mr. Navara, after a retirement meeting and talking with my husband over the weekend, I am very sorry, but I am going to have to resign as head cheerleading coach as of March 12th. It is time for me to spend more time with my family and focus on cross-country and track. Sincerely, Cheryl Brazel.
Yeah, I have the same face, Mr. Rungy. The recommendation is to accept it, 'cause we really can't...
Not.
We could, we could. Okay, you've heard the recommendation from administration, I'll entertain a motion. So, second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much for all the years you put in with that. Appreciate it.
Dear Mr. Grody and CUSD 186 Board of Education, please accept this letter as my resignation as principal at Murfreesboro High School effective June 30, 2018. I have recently been hired as the next principal at Pinky Bell Community High School. It has truly been my honor and privilege to serve this great community and school district over the past six years. I want to first thank the current Board of Ed for their support, but also thank Kathy Lane, Julie Urbis, Mike Criffs, and Mike Austin, who were the members of the board who initially hired me. I want to especially thank Mr. Grody for his support and mentorship during my time here. It has allowed me to become more of a successful leader and pursue this opportunity. I honestly would not be in this position if it wasn't for him. I look forward to finishing this year strong, and by no means will I take my foot off the gas, off the gas pedal. I genuinely feel like we have accomplished a lot to be proud of over the last six years, and I would not have had this opportunity to advance my career if it weren't for the amazing people I work with every day. I will forever be indebted to the staff and faculty at MHS for not only what they've done for me, but also my family. Thank you to all of the teachers at both MMS and MHS who have helped shape Hannah into the person and student she is today. Moving forward, I will be proud to tell everyone that we came from Murfreesboro. Thank you again. Sincerely, Tony Wilson.
Regretfully, the, uh, recommendation is to accept his letter of resignation with the contingency that we get to keep Hannah.
Alright, you've heard recommendation from administration, I'll entertain a motion. Some of them. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Best of luck to you, Mr. Wilson. Thank you. You're now a panther. Out for another couple more. Yes, you are.
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay.
Dear Murfreesboro School, School Board, I am currently enrolled in Math 512C Elementary Probability and Statistics for Spring 2018. I am also taking Math 411, Math Topics for Teachers, for the Summer 2018 Semester. These courses are designed to help improve math instruction in the elementary school setting and are made possible through a federal grant and ROE. Each of these three courses are three credit hours. I'm requesting permission to apply the six credit hours to this, to my salary schedule. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Respectfully submitted, Sherry Schimpf.
The recommendation is to approve Ms. Schimpf's credits.
Alright, you've heard the recommendation from administration. Is there a motion to approve?
Some of them.
All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. And one last item for communication, just want to remind the board, as I mentioned last month, I will not be here at the April meeting. Okay, fishbowl items, and I think we have a few. Who wants to start? Mrs. James?
Sure. Um, this is from Mr. Moreland. The Crimson Express Indoor Drumline finished its second year of competition by winning two out of the three competitions this year. Congratulations to Crimson Express Drumline. I went to see them, actually. Very nice.
The tradition continues.
Well, this one addressed to Coach Murphy. Dear Coach Murphy, I want you to know from the bottom of my heart, what I saw last night was one of the most humbling experiences in my 44 years of life. Never forget, you're teaching these young men just as much about life as you are about the game of basketball. I know some of the boys on your team come from some pretty rough situation, and thanks be to God that you are there for them. Thank you for being a wonderful role model, not only for the basketball team, but to the entire community. I love to watch your passion for the game, and I love to watch your desire to win, so keep that going. But last night was one of your finest moments. I love, the way you loved Rowdy and let him participate and be a part of your team was truly amazing. Please be assured that we are so proud that you are the coach of Murfreesboro Basketball Team. Keep up the good work, and we will be in the stands cheering you and your team on. Cheers, Joe, Hoem, Max, and Nigel's dad.
I'm going to assume that almost everybody saw that. That was...
There's, there's one other layer of that, if I can...
Sure.
That's happening this Friday. Congressman Boss is gonna be in our building, he's presenting Rowdy with the Congressional Record. He read, he basically took that news three-story and read it on the House floor about a month ago. I mean, a lot of people have seen it, and he's actually gonna come present Rowdy with the official record.
Wonderful.
Uh, Friday at 11:15.
There was a lot of lessons there that night, and I don't, I hope they weren't lost, don't you think?
It had nothing to do with basketball.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, great job.
Uh, Mr. Kinnearo said, "I would, I just wanted to thank and recognize the secretarial staff at Carruthers for some heads-up work last week. Person came into their school requesting to pick up a student. The person was not listed as a contact and was not related to the student. The student was not released, which is standard, but the ladies in the office recognized that there was a sibling here and alerted us to the incident in case the person showed up here." This is an example of outstanding communication between buildings, and just another example of the type of people we have working in CUSD 186. Good job and thanks, Mr. Kinnear. I was actually there, uh, in Carruthers when some of this was going on, I would like to commend all of them, they did a great job of making sure it didn't get elevated to where anybody was really drawing attention to anything, and the child had no idea what was going on.
Another one, this comes from Melinda Pearson. George Muter participated in the SIUC Fall Educational Summit and received an interactive augmented reality sandbox for his classroom. Muter uses the augmented reality sandbox to illustrate the principles of landforms, contour lines, water and lava flows, and various other earth science concepts. In addition, a team of six freshman students who are learning the functions of the sandbox will be taking it to Carruthers next month to show the seven third-grade classes the capabilities and let them use it to help them learn those concepts. Also, Rachel Chamnis and Stacy Teff were recognized by the El, Illinois Chapter of the Trail of Tears Association for a curriculum focused on the Southern Illinois Route of the Trail of Tears that they developed using GIS mapping?
GPS map?
GIS.
GIS mapping and primary sources. Teff and Chamnis were asked to present their work on using primary sources for instruction and assessment in the social studies classroom at the SIUC Fall Educational Summit, and each teacher received a 3D printer and a 3D scanner for use in their own classrooms. More importantly, because of their work, MHS students had the opportunity to work with interactive maps using technology. In this project, they will collaborate the maps with primary sources to analyze why the Cherokee stopped at certain points along the trip.
Cool.
This one's also, um, submitted by Melinda Pearson. Uh, research is generally thought about at the high school level, but in January, first grade teacher Carrie Kilquist and high school English teacher Jennifer Allemeyer have paired up to expand research into Ms. Kilquist's first grade classroom. A small group of freshman English students from Ms. Allemeyer's class went to General John A. Logan Grade School to assist with this project. Mrs. Kilquist had previously worked with the first graders on researching different types of penguins and helped them to begin to create note cards with their facts. When Mrs. Allemeyer and her students arrived the first day, they helped the first graders to complete a total of five note cards for specified elements of the penguins, such as habitat, food and diet, predators, fun facts, and physical features. The high school students then each took a group of four first-grade students and guided them through the paragraph writing. The second day, the high school students arrived, those, they continued their guidance for the next few paragraphs of the essay. The first graders were so enthusiastic, they finished almost twice as many paragraphs in one day as planned. Ms. Allemeyer and Mrs. Kilquist then discovered, or then discussed and planned for the first graders to verbally present their research to the other first-grade classes. On the third visit to the general, the high school students had the opportunity to assist in helping their specified first-grade group of students travel to each of the other first-grade classes and present a PowerPoint presentation using student-created note cards based on the research paper the students created. This was an amazing experience for both the first graders and the high school students. Both groups thoroughly enjoyed working together. And my son Max is in Mrs. Kilquist's class, and so I got to see all of the work, and it was also really awesome, so.
Cool.
He doesn't want me to read this, but I'm gonna. This is from the Illinois State Board of Education, uh, February 27th, 2018. Dear Superintendent Grody, congratulations on being named a Superintendent of Distinction by the Illinois Association of School Administrators. The Illinois State Board of Education, in partnership with IAASA and the Illinois Principal Association, cordially invites you and a guest to join us May 1 for a celebratory luncheon, sponsored by the Horace Mann Educators Corporation, honoring you and the other top school administrators from across the state. Each honoree will have the opportunity to address the group for up to two minutes if they would like to do so. Congratulations, and we look forward to seeing you in May. Sincerely, Tony Smith, Brent Clark, and Jason Lee.
Yeah, if I knew that letter was gonna be in there, I would've included Mr. Wilson's also the principal for the region of distinction, so they do one for every region.
Congratulations to both of you. Any others? Is that it? Fishbowl? Alright, next item is the Freedom of Information Act request. Did we have any?
There were none.
None. Item number 10 is the recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Are there any public concerns? Are there any employee concerns? Mrs. Crane?
I'd like to read a letter on some of the employees...
Okay, can you come up a little closer, state your name, so that this is being recorded?
Right here?
Yes, that's good.
Okay, my name is Linda Crane, and I would like to read a letter, uh, from some of the staff at Carruthers regarding the early retirement incentive. Dear Unit District 186 School Board, we are asking for your serious consideration in the matter of the early retirement incentive. Your support of this ERI would be greatly appreciated. At Carruthers School, six of us will qualify for the buyout. Of those six, five of us would take the early retirement. The difference in our income with the early retirement is substantial. Our biggest concern is having enough money in retirement to afford health insurance. With the buyout, we would be able to afford this. Without it, many of us would not be able to retire. Your support of this would be our confirmation that our dedication was appreciated. Between the six of us, we have given 125 years of our lives. After dedicate, after dedicating this many years, it is time for many of us to set aside and let younger, uh, other younger people take the reins. Thank you for your consideration, Linda Crane, Sandy Malur, Doris Rungy, Cash McGarner, and Paul Sagis. And I have copies for each of you.
You can just give it to each one of them if you wanted. Thank you.
From Carruthers, yeah, from Carruthers, in case you don't know. Just, just informing you.
Just information.
Yeah. You can share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other employee concerns? Yes, ma'am. Same thing, Mrs. Pearson.
I am Karen Pearson, I work for the unit office. On behalf of the unit office employees, we understand the administration has presented information to you about an early retirement incentive for eligible, non-certified employees, and it has been discussed at several board meetings. We would greatly appreciate your consideration in the passing of this incentive. We have approximately 161 years of service between seven employees in the district office. We are very appreciative of our positions and what they have afforded us and our families through the years. We have worked with many administrators and staff, some of us beginning our careers as a sub in the schools. The primary reason the incentive would benefit us is simply, we would be able to retire. Without it, none of us would be able to afford to retire at this time. Some of us are facing challenging health issues, and the incentive will allow us to dedicate time to our health concerns. It will further enable us to spend quality time with our families in the last chapters of our lives. IMRF employees do not receive a retirement bonus. We do not receive our contribution employee share paid by the district either. We have to pay the 4.5% of our salary into IMRF for retirement. In addition, most of us are on the district's health insurance plan. Health insurance is definitely a worry when someone retires. We do have the option of continuing on the school district health insurance after retirement, but this would be at our own expense. Currently, the premium is $672 per month, a rather high premium. The other option is to find our own affordable health insurance plan, which is almost impossible to do. TRS employees have a much better option at retirement, to go on the TRS health insurance plan, which is quite affordable. The district does pay a percentage each year to the TRS to keep this cost down for the TRS retirees. The reality for most of us, however, is that we are all getting older and reaching retirement age. Getting older comes with more health issues. The more health issues we have, the more claims to go against our plan. The higher the claims, the higher the cost of health insurance premiums. Several of the employees that are needing the early retirement incentive have health issues and will keep taking numerous sick days for doctor appointments and hospital stays. Therefore, getting the older people off the district's health insurance plan would cause the claim to be reduced and keep the health insurance premiums down as well. This could be a big savings for the district. It has truly been, and will continue to be, a pleasure to serve the district for all of these years. We thank you for the opportunity to be part of the Murfreesboro CUSD 186 team and have appreciated the collectively 161 years of service, of which we have been a part. Those who signed are Daryl Rogers, Joe Grave, Nancy Ward, Rhonda Dickerson, Barb Helfridge, Karen Pearson, and John Keller.
You can hand it to each one of us. Nancy?
And me. Yeah, I didn't like that word.
It's just a number.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Any other employee concerns? None? Alright, thank you all for coming. Moving to old business, the first item under old business is the district financial update. This is informational, Mr. Grody?
And like I say, it's just gonna be on the agenda. Um, April is when we should be getting our, some signs of our new money, correct, Jan?
That's what they've been saying.
What they've been saying, so we're gonna wait till next month, and I'm hoping that we'll have that signed before the 3rd Tuesday, to which I can share some more information, so.
Can you tell me who "they" is?
The state.
The state Board of Education?
State Board of Education.
Um, we'll, we'll receive our allocations from the State Board of Education once, um, the legislature irons out those last few...
You're saying, we're not getting money, we're gonna get the number that we should get from the state.
They'll give us the allocation, and at that time, I hope they will let us know when we'll be receiving.
Yeah, they'll put it into friz. Controller won't, uh, will have to release the check, but they'll at least put it into the system as saying, "You'll be requisitioned for this amount."
And, and we haven't been informed at this point, once that happens, how they will give us the payments, if it will be one lump sum, if they will add that to our remaining. Um, they're no longer called General State Aid payments, now they're, um, evidence-based funding payments, so.
Mr. Green brings up a good point, though. In April, we should know the amount, and then it's a matter of getting the checks, to which...
Which obviously has been the issue for the past hour and a half.
Yeah.
And will they all come this fiscal year? Don't know that either.
What's that?
That's, you're just talking about the new money. Right, that's just the, the new evidence-based money. But yes, we, at this time, till those, those final things get ironed out in the legislature. My understanding is that made, those changes were agreed on and made it through the House, and that's where they are at this point, so. Yes, we are still hoping to hear in April, and at that time, maybe we will know a little bit more about...
We have been receiving checks in the equivalent of last year's amounts, so.
Yes. We have an evidence-based, uh, funding minimum, which includes the money that we, the same amount that we received in General State Aid last year, plus our special education dollars, which we previously received quarterly, which we're always behind, um, but now we're receiving all the special ed, you know, the same amount with our General State Aid, so we receive that in 22 payments throughout the year, instead of having that delay as we do the transportation.
Good. Any other questions? Alright, next item under old business is the high school auditorium update. I'm not sure who was giving this.
So, moving right along, we've got the walls, we've got the trusses, if you go in there If you go in there and you look, they've got most of the trusses set. I would guess the next stage is they're going to start digging the place for the seats. Is that the next step, Mr. Seifer?
The next step would be finish putting all the structural steel up, and then they'll pull the braces down, and then they'll start digging where the seats are, start building the exterior walls on the course room, the storage rooms in the back, and the officer enclosing everything in.
The good news is the English teachers are all back in their classes. They're very excited about that, right, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, more than excited.
And we're still on schedule?
Yeah. We've had, I wouldn't say we're ahead.
Just put we're on schedule.
Wouldn't want to put that down.
Well, enough, all this rain's been a little tough.
Right, and snow today comes short, so.
How's the culvert project?
The rocks there, the culvert's there. I believe that the weather these last two days have stopped any work out there. I haven't, it's hard to, you can't get over there to see it really, but I don't think that they've started working.
They were out there early today.
They were out there working this afternoon when I went by there.
Yeah, getting Sixteenth Street back open will be the next step in getting the parking lot back to.
Parking lot's still going to have to be modified, because they've set that fence out there where that staging area, so we're going to still lose a quarter of the parking lot, but once Sixteenth Street opens back up, we can go back to regular dismissal and.
I know the city's looking forward to Sixteenth Street opening back up so that they don't have to direct traffic on Fourteenth personally. I'm looking forward to that, too.
The entrance, when will that go back to being the main entrance in?
December.
December of next year, yeah.
So they're going to continue to go through the gym?
Yeah, right now, last week, Mr. Ripley ordered all of the material so we can transition our camera and security system, and so that will function as a, more of a lockdown entrance and exit. It's just, that's probably not going to happen until after spring break. It's just a matter of getting the parts in, and he needs a week to get everything installed and up and going until the key card system work through that door.
There's also going to be concrete ramps built out over there for.
ADA compliance. I think that'll happen over spring break.
Yeah.
Other questions from the board? Thank you. Okay, next item is the middle school elevator replacement project bid approval.
We opened the bids today. You should find a sheet of paper there. Right now, Fager McGee Construction had the lowest bid with three hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. That is the recommendation that we would move forward with them. Questions, concerns, comments?
I forget, but what was the estimate?
We started with around five hundred thousand.
And this is all-inclusive?
Yeah.
Yes. Includes renovating the office to a classroom, and the classroom becomes an office, so we're flip-flopping that.
This number includes the elevator that's being built by.
Yeah, Phoenix Elevators, the elevator company.
The only thing it doesn't include is there's a small amount of asbestos.
Very small amount.
Some ceiling tiles in the speech room and floor tiles in the cafeteria lobby that have to be abated. We're doing that outside of the project and have gotten one quote on that, giving a second quote, but those are.
It's a rough estimate of what that's going to be.
About thirteen thousand. Thirteen to fifteen. And most of their subcontractors are local, too.
Other questions from the board? Okay, so you've heard the recommendation then to award the middle school elevator replacement project to Fager McGee. I will entertain a motion to approve. And a second thing? Nancy?
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dor?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James? Yes. Mr. Bevers?
Yes. Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Item number four is the resolution to approve an IMRF early retirement incentive and resolution to adopt a five-year amortization period for the IMRF ERI enclosures, one and two. I know there has been a lot of questions from the board. Are there any other questions from the board that have not been asked and/or answered?
On the resolution, you say that this would be funded through levying additional taxes next year.
Well, it wouldn't start until, this doesn't actually, wouldn't actually start until 2020, our increase in our IMRF ERI amount, so the increase would come through levy property taxes. Well, on the flip side, we'd have a lower amount necessary to be levied in the education fund due to the savings in our salaries.
So that's my other question.
So, because we're levying a lump sum.
Who has been, how many people then would not be replaced, or salaries are going to be, what is the addition, a savings?
That would depend completely on who, how many actually retired, and, you know, that would be an administration and board decision on, you know, what positions were replaced and basically at what level. So, right now, I mean, it's truly in terms, speaking in terms of hypotheticals, because there are so many people on the list and no way to truly know how many will, would take it if offered. Also, you know, as I mentioned previously, the cost estimate from IMRF includes the, basically, the worst-case scenario. Every vacation day that any twelve-month employee has on hand, the day that I sent the cost, the request for the cost estimate in, whatever they had on hand that day, all the days that they could possibly receive up until the end of that window, assuming everybody waited until June thirtieth and nineteenth to retire, and that they take no vacation days during that period of time, so that's the maximum the liability would be. Also, you know, I feel, based on the 2011 program that we did, those, when we go back and look at those, the costs, the actual board costs compared to what IMRF said it was going to cost us was overstated by ten percent. And I think, you know, in that case, they're making a guess at that point, too, on what the salaries will be, what the hours each employee works, so it's a best guess on their part. So, basically, the board, the board in order to approve the early retirement incentive would have to approve the worst-case scenario, the most, the largest liability that we would have, and every issue that we've had, we've done three previously, we, of course, not the entire employee, you know, group that's eligible, did take the retirement, and the cost was less, so.
But I just want to be clear, though, that the, it would, in order to pay for this, we have to increase property taxes.
That just depends. I mean, of course.
Well, for levying.
That's, that's the assumption, that every person retires and that we replace every single person at that level. There would be a cost, assuming all those vacation days were paid for, there would be a cost, and there would be an increase in that case.
I spend more time on this in the past month than I have on any project an employer pays me to do, and I'm, yes, sorry.
I understand that.
So, my numbers, and I've calculated, I want to be, yes, there's some dear friends that are in this group, there are a lot of people that have given a lot of time to this district, even with that ten percent difference of what the IMRF said, 2011, what actually was, taking that into account, and let's say we can lower these numbers by ten percent on what this year's analysis was, we're going to have a sixty-two thousand shortage in general ed by transferring to IMRF in the first year, second year forty-six thousand dollar, third year fifty-seven thousand dollar, fourth year seventy-eight thousand dollar, and the fifth year eighty thousand dollars. Where does that sixty-two thousand dollars come from? If we're shorting general ed in one year, sixty-two thousand dollars, what makes up for that? Has to be property taxes.
Yes.
Okay, so I want to be very clear, that has to raise property taxes by sixty-two thousand in the first year to get back to even. We can't assume that the new funding analysis is going to give us sixty-two thousand dollars, because even if it does, we don't know if we get it. We can't assume that there's going to be three or four of these positions, because in the past three, four years, I would assume we're bare bones at this point. If we're not, we haven't done our job in the first place, because we've let, you know, teachers go that we may, should have needed. So, if we're saying that there are positions that don't need to be refilled, then we weren't doing our job in the past three years to set ourselves up for something like this anyways. My concern is, one, being the steward of the taxpayer dollar, two, being, you know, the board that ensures that our children are in the best position moving forward, and if I knew where that sixty-two thousand dollars was coming from that was going to magically appear, I would be all for it all day long. I don't know how we explain that to the taxpayer for the sixty-two thousand, the forty-seven thousand, the fifty-seven thousand.
Right, understanding that's, that is a hypothetical number, I mean, that's the worst-case scenario again, and.
If we do so, I've ran it by seventeen different ways. Best-case scenario is the one that it makes monetarily the most sense for. It was, it's actually a worse-off situation. The ones who make, you know, essentially, they would have to pay a good chunk out of pocket, assuming that their existing salary is low enough that they'd be paying almost their yearly salary just to get out of, you know, to their portion paying them to, which I can't speak for those people if it would work for them or not. This number is the highest, but there will be, at the minimum, about a twenty thousand dollars each year that we'd be short, even if ten people took it. There would still be a twenty thousand dollar we would have to come up with to make general ed back to good.
That's, again, that's still the assumption that calculate into those salaries for all those, all those vacation days?
I took fifty percent of those, assuming that half of them would be spent between now and June nineteenth, or whenever the person decides. If half of them were taken and half of them were paid out, those are the numbers I use.
Right.
But most vacation days.
Fifty percent of vacation day payout.
Instances would be used, I'm sure, or they would try to bank them to pay for their employee portion of their.
Some could be, some wouldn't, because there's a, there's a maximum that Teamsters can keep based on their contract, so that would be the only thing, and just based on, you know, personal knowledge of some vacations, that some days that have hardly been taken, or some days that will be taken, so that's hard to say. And, you know, I asked IMRF for their calculation, your actuarial calculation, you know, where you drop in the numbers, and they said there are too many variables to make the assumption if we pull, you know, three people, five people, what will that look like? And they're just saying that because there's so many different combinations, there's really no way to run that scenario, and no, this is what it is. I just know that based on what we did in 2011, what the assumptions were, we did have, we did show a savings when we replaced those positions. You know, there were, you know, based on the IMRF cost and replacing those positions with the much lower, much lower salaries at that point, we did have thirty-two thousand dollar savings over that period. And we're talking about two different funds, IMRF fund, so you're going to have an increased cost in the IMRF fund, you're going to realize the savings in the education fund. So, there's, there's no guarantee that we're not going to have those costs, but I also know that all those people on the list, they're not, thirty-two people are not going to walk out the door, they either won't be able to afford to, or just aren't ready to go, you know, a lot, a lot of various reasons. And even the people in this room, that are on that list that are eligible, I think if you held their feet to the fire, they wouldn't be able to tell you necessarily right now whether they would or they wouldn't go.
How many people last time were eligible, and how many people took it?
We had twenty-two and eleven. Half of them.
So here's kind of my concern, is I feel like, and I think we all know, this is kind of a gamble, this is kind of a roll the dice, and let's see how many retire, and with, under what conditions, and the numbers just play out. What concerns me is in 2011, we saved money, but it was only thirty-two thousand. So for me, that isn't, that isn't something that we would say, oh, we don't need to levy, you know, as much for the ed fund over thirty-two thousand, which, you know, in the big scheme of things, isn't much. So I mean, just say that we might have to increase IMRF levy, but not the ed fund levy. I don't know, for me, that just doesn't, doesn't sit right, because thirty-two thousand isn't that much money.
Right, but for, you know, from year to year, you're not looking to, you know, if you have, and I mean, we, we have a X amount of levy every year, under tax caps, so this is the amount that we have. So if, you know, if we're, we need to increase by a hundred thousand dollars the IMRF fund, but we found that that was a savings, and in the case of the 2011, we had a little, a little bit more of a savings, so, you know, you're levying a little bit more in IMRF, but you're potentially levying less, and you can't look at the big, you know, overall, because you might be levying more for something else you're doing. Maybe you had to hire three new teachers that year, and that's going to have an impact. But, you know, bottom line, without us going, going out for referendum to increase property taxes, you know, under tax caps, this is, this is all we're going to get.
But that is quite a savings. I mean, thirty-two thousand, that's, that's why.
Yeah, I just think, I think of that in the big scheme of.
When you're talking the big scheme, if you are stewards of taxpayer dollars, thirty-two thousand going that way is in the right direction, then saying, I'm not going to do anything, go thirty-two thousand dollars that way.
Sure.
And I mean, we've had longer discussion over this than having a hearing and raising the levy by six percent.
I think the key thing there, though, is, is that the, people say we're going to raise taxes, and technically, we're not going to raise taxes. I mean, we're going, we always levy the extension of what we're allowed to anyway, with tax caps, it is what it is.
We always go over what we're.
It's moving the stuff around, we always levy, yeah, we do the extension.
We never do the four-point-nine.
We have our hearing, and we always.
We always raise taxes.
So it's not.
We do raise taxes.
And that's what we did last year, was a six-to-one.
Right, but every year, regardless, if we do this or we don't do this, the recommendation for the levy is still going to be to maximize it. So it's, it's.
That is what we did in November. Everybody voted to raise the levy by six percent, six to one. So we've raised that under this board, we've raised under every board for the last, probably thirty years. And this is saving, could save thirty-two thousand dollars, which isn't a lot with this budget, but it's something.
It could also cost a million dollars, though.
When you lower, just like when you abate half of the O and M fund, even though it wasn't that much in the scheme of things, it's still going that way. The county bids by increments, they went that way. I want to see going this way, even if you're saving a little bit.
So 2011, the difference between, they were thinking they were going to lose fifty-five thousand and saving thirty-two thousand, was that ten percent savings, the ten percent difference between what the IMRF analysis said and what the actual costs were. If I, when I took the numbers and I said, let's, let's save that ten percent from the numbers they showed us, let's not, let's have two people retire and not hire them back, make one of them one of the higher-paid people retiring, one of them one of the middle-paid, our cost over five years is thirty-nine thousand. Over five years. Now, if you say, let's make this a six- or seven-year process, and let's not even entertain another ERI for eight years, but you don't know what, as people get closer to retirement age, you don't know what that pool looks like, but even, so with that, best-case scenario, with hiring back two less employees, you're looking at between five thousand and nine thousand a year deficit to general ed.
But that would depend on the employees.
Yeah, how'd you get that? Based on what they were working at before, or?
Based off the numbers that we got from Jan that showed what we were hoping to hire back at, so the savings for that individual position. So somebody's making twenty-five, hiring somebody back at fifteen, it's a ten thousand dollars a year savings, fifty thousand over five years, and that person probably costs seventy thousand to do the IMRF, so it's a negative twenty thousand dollars, which the twenty thousand dollars comes out of general ed, because you're transferring money from general ed to cover that over five years to cover IMRF.
But again, that depends on the person, which is why, when I talk to IMRF, you know, I tried to talk through some of those scenarios with them, and that's what they said. If you change this thing, this thing changes, and, you know, each employee costs a different amount under, under ERI to the board, and there's a certain savings associated with that, so every, every time you plug somebody different in, because I was trying to find that break-even point, and it's every time I change something.
Have you plugged in a scenario to where in five years we've saved money, I guess?
I talked to them about that, and I did, I mean, looking at the bottom line, potentially either reducing hours or restructuring, I do, I do believe we can have a savings through, you know, through replacements of salaries. And in the scenarios I had, had, you know, certain levels, bringing people in at certain levels on the salary schedule, and again, those were just assumptions and scenarios, and maybe when it comes time to do that, we have, the board has a totally different idea of how we do that. So the, so the rehiring and the placement on salary schedule is, is actually administration and board decision, and not something that's set in stone, or that, you know, those were just assumptions to try to come up with something on my part on replacement of employees, because, again, we can play that out a number of different ways.
The other, I guess my devil's advocate says, this could cost us money. Every time a teacher retires, it costs us ten thousand dollars. I mean, it's, you know, it's like Karen, I think, or whoever, somebody's worried about it, and there isn't, it isn't as though this is a, it isn't as though we're pulling bonuses out of there, this is something we do for other employees under different divisions, I guess, so that's, I weigh that out, I mean, that needs to be played into. This may cost us money, but so do other things we do for our employees. What are the Teamsters, I'm sorry, Teamsters get?
Six percent.
Six, okay.
Their final year, when they give their notice, we bump their salary up to six percent. They go off the salary schedule and go up six percent over their prior year.
So this is the only class of employee that doesn't get a bump to help their retirement unless we adopt this?
The only ones that have that are the non-represented, you know, our MEA Teamsters, they have something in their contracts, but pretty much everyone else, district-wide, that isn't covered by that contract, that there's nothing.
But this isn't really a bump in salary. I mean, it's, they would, if they worked the.
No, just a financial.
Right. So it's not a bonus. In fact, it's going to cost them money.
It's going to cost them money, but it gives them more credit.
If they choose to.
If they choose to do that, it gives them the credit for the more service.
It's down the road.
Most of the dollar figures I saw is around seven to twelve thousand dollars out of pocket when they do it, to make four hundred or so a month.
Right.
For the duration of the pension.
Versus working another a couple, couple years and retiring.
Because they get five years of age and five years of service credit.
Right.
Up to five years of age. Some may not need as much. Forty years is a maximum pension with IMRF.
And thirty-one of the forty-one could qualify, or could retire now if they wanted to, but with a penalty of some sort.
Right.
Oh, with a penalty.
Forty-one.
Yeah.
Thirty-one of the forty-one.
Thirty-two.
We had forty-one.
Thirty-two's ours.
Right.
Twenty-one of our thirty-two, I think is that number.
But when you say, without a penalty, that doesn't maximize their pension, I mean, they still. I mean, they still, they still benefit dramatically by those five years. And I've, and I've talked to a couple of you, um, when, you know, when we were asking questions and going back and forth about the impact of that five years. And in my case, and I'm not, I probably won't retire for another fourteen years or more, unless you guys shut me out the door, and then maybe sooner than that. But, so, you know, I really don't have a dog in this fight personally, but, but we all got our IMRF statements, um, pension statements last week, I think, maybe it was a week before. And that, that five years, for me, um, made a difference, additional five years of almost doubling what my pension would be versus age fifty-five, versus age sixty, not quite doubling, but, but pretty close. And I'm looking at that saying, gosh, if I wanted to retire at fifty-five, there's no way I could live on that. Um, but at sixty, well, that's, you know, that's a little closer. So I mean, those are the things we're talking about, and everybody's pension statement is going to be different, but that impact is the same for every single person. And, and I'm in the same boat. Um, you know, health insurance, for me, would be the same issue. I don't have anything out there post-retirement unless I, my husband still worked for the state at that time, which I have no idea that he will. But that's, that's kind, the insurance is a big thing for IMRF employees versus TRS employees. TRS has been, you know, that, that great option, which we've been, you know, talking to IM, IMRF about for years. Why don't we have that out there for us? But, um, you know, yes, they still have to pay for that, but it's an affordable plan on retirement that they can pay and have that, um, have that coverage until, until they're Medicare eligible. And so that's, that's kind of the vote that everyone's in. You're looking at that sixty-five, at that Medicare eligibility, saying, gosh, you know, that's a long time till we can get to that.
If we vote yes on this, what was, when it comes into a building who has, um, a good amount that is on this list, what's the best way that we can ensure that new employees coming in are gonna be able, must be mentored a little bit, aside from them just kind of picking up?
Entire unit office is gone.
We've walked in cold.
And we want to prevent that.
Yeah, but some of you are gonna be staggered anyway, aren't you?
Well, those are conversations that, that we've had, that I've had with, you know, for, for some people that are working in the buildings, it's, it's more of a clean break to be able to go at the end of the school year, or maybe it's not. I mean, maybe it, if, you know, but if you're a teacher's aide, that's a, a great, you know, stopping point at the end of the year, or maybe the end of, uh, you know, a calendar year. Uh, but I know, you know, people that work in this building, that we've kind of had those conversations. Should you, should we, the board decide to offer it, and we have that option, um, you know, I'd work until, you know, the end of the window or until halfway through. But I mean, there have been discussions about training and, and not everybody walking out the door at the same time and, and leaving us in that position.
It also gives your building principals the opportunity to redefine these job descriptions on some of these positions, and maybe combine something to make it more efficient. I don't know.
I don't think any of the long-term, you know, people that wanna retire would wanna leave without making sure that what they're leaving is, you know, supportive. They're long-time employees that, you know, obviously love the district and their job, and I think they, you know, we have their full support in that.
And I've heard those concerns. Will, will there, you know, will our jobs be posted in time that we can have people hired, so there can be that transition process? So I, so I know that there is that concern with, with the eligible group of employees.
I have a question on this, um, form. It says ten-year payback.
And that's, that's the automatic on the form, which is why there's a second resolution for the five-year. Because that, that did not used to be on the form in past years. That's something new that they've added since we adopted the last ERO. There was no, um, dollar amount for an amortization period, or even a discussion of an amortization period in prior years. So that's on there, assuming that that's, that's an automatic unless you adopt the other resolution, which specifies how many years you want that payback over. Which is why I included both of the resolutions here, um, with the recommendation that approving the early retirement incentive, that the board would also approve that five-year payback resolution.
Did, uh, quick question. Did the two thousand eleven, um, savings include the actual dollar amount we paid IMRF? Because being amortized ten, paying it in five and having a lump sum. So the number you use for that thirty-two thousand, what was that actual savings? Assuming if we would have paid it in five years instead of the.
That was the assumption in five years. That was the five-year assumption, so we could.
So we really didn't have a savings?
No, so we could look at apples to apples on this one, because that didn't include the, the error.
Two thousand eleven probably wasn't a savings when it all came down to.
Right, with the interest cost due to the.
Additional hundred and thirty thousand then, right? Did we have to pay a hundred and sixty-three?
I think it's a number.
So it cost us a hundred and thirty thousand.
I don't know what that, what the number was off the top of my head. I know we talked about that last, at the last board meeting.
It does open up new jobs in the community, too.
I think that's where my, you know, I have to fill out any big decision. I got my pros and my cons. My, my pro on this is that, is you're bringing people in, and I know, I know peaceful people personally whose husbands have self-employed jobs, and they're working only for insurance. And so, and I, I look at some of these people, and I think, man, they would be great at these positions. They would be overly qualified, but they're okay with that, because they're only doing it for insurance. And I know you could bring in, you know, staff that would be, would be awesome. And, um, and be able to, you know, tell these people who've spent twenty-five, thirty years, thank you for all their hard work. Best case scenario that you run, if you say, by doing some moving around, that there can be money saved, we, I'm gonna hold your feet to the fire on that moving forward. We feel like we can make that seed fruit fruition, makes me feel a lot better about things.
Right. I mean, it's a con- in continuing discussion as people go, and we know what those, what those costs are going to look like. Uh, because, you know, I know, we know at the end of each calendar year, what those costs are gonna be, but I'm, I also know that as soon as we give, the, the notification comes from the employee that they're going to retire, and we turn in their final, this is their final pay, then we should be able to make a phone call to IMRF and say, okay, what did that cost? So we can kind of have an idea moving forward, that target of savings that, that we need to look at, or even break even. You know, just, you know, my point in this, if we don't have a cost, if we, if we can have a break even and not at, be asking to increase the levy or asking for, um, money, it's, it's, to me, it's a win-win.
Um, in, in this, you know, obviously, it's a big decision. Um, you're talking about trying to take money from one bucket to another bucket to make things work. It's frustrating, too, when you feel like we're making decisions as we go without a big picture. We still haven't, and I've, I've told you my displeasure in the fact that we're still, we don't know about our buildings. You know, that was, the committees were formed before I was even on the board over a year ago, and we still don't know our buildings, you know, how much money do we need to spend on those, and so we're making decisions without even our largest asset slash liability being our buildings, um, that's in the air. That's tough to do. And I don't, they shouldn't be held vulnerable because of somebody's ineptness or inability to.
There's still a lot of information that we're gathering on that, too, based upon a repurposing of the middle school, which is being discussed, which encompasses quite a few entities within the county. So it's, it's taking some time.
I talked with Mr. Stewart again today, and he assured me we will have that facility report by hook or by crook. It's just the room is not by the next board meeting, so, um.
I understand your point.
Yeah, and I.
I mean, we can't talk about something right now.
I'm a strictly private sector guy. I've never worked for government, so I, yeah, it's.
But that, I mean, and we talked about this, too. That's an issue that we have year after year, not ever having all the pieces of the puzzle to make all those decisions. You know, not knowing exactly what our additional funding is going to be, not knowing what our budget next year is going to be. It is hard to make those decisions based on incomplete information, and.
But if we knew what our upcoming expenses were, it would be easier to make a decision on if we can afford to do this. But it seems very arbitrary to me about what's being spent and when. We get, uh, notice that we need to do this, and it's gonna cost this amount of money. And then we're gonna do this, and it's gonna cost another hundred thousand dollars. And then we might do this, and it's gonna cost us, worst-case scenario, a million dollars. Um, and then we might, oh, we've gotta replace this, and we need to do this. And it's completely arbitrary, where I feel like we could have a plan saying, this is what we know we need to do, and this is what we know how much it's gonna cost. Like, we know we have buildings that we need to get out of. And for a year, we've been asking, what's the plan? And I feel like if we had a plan, these kinds of decisions would be easy to make.
I think that's part of the nature of the beast when you're dealing with the government. I mean, you look at SIU, I think they're kind of arbitrary in some of the things they do, as well as the state, and, and, 'cause you don't have all that information. I mean, you got, you know, you don't, you, you got a projection in what enrollment's gonna be in the fall, but you don't know yet, so they're guessing on that. And part of our problem is with our architects, with the, with the facility study. I mean, other than kicking them out and getting new architects, maybe holding them to the fire and getting something quicker, we should have had something before last year, and that's who.
But you know what we do at SIU when we are not sure? We stop spending money. We freeze travel. We freeze, um, ex- entertainment expenses. We don't let people buy food. We don't, on any kind of account. Um, we have accounts that people should be able to spend money off of, and they're not spending, spending money off of them. They're not even state accounts, but we have to keep it in the bank so that we can make payroll. So we don't spend money if we're not sure of what's happening.
I'm not saying that they don't, but I mean, I mean, there's issues with all the government, with all the ins and outs. I mean, with the new chancellor hired, there were issues with something that wasn't told to the board. So I mean, that, that was an issue where they spent a crap load of money and didn't. So I mean, it's not, it's not just Murphysboro School District. I mean, you can talk to some of the other districts that run worse than this one.
I agree.
'Cause you're working a district.
You know, it wasn't that long ago that we were even wondering if we could keep the doors open. So it's, we've come, we've come.
And we did that thing back then. We didn't have the, uh, whatever you guys call it, called continuing ed, but whatever, professional development. We had froze that for a year back, a year or two ago, because we didn't know if we're gonna keep the doors open, when we didn't have that funds. I mean, we've, we've gone through that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, if not, I will entertain a motion based upon the recommendation of administration with the resolution to approve an IMRF early retirement incentive and resolution to adopt a five-year amortization period for the IMRF ERI. Do we have a motion? Can you have a second?
Second.
An answer?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorr?
No.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. I would like to thank Mrs. Bush. You put in, I know you and I probably traded some text messages after midnight sometimes on the weekends, and I know you put a tremendous amount of work into this. To the employees that do take this retirement, I want to thank you for your service to this district. And if nothing else, I hope and pray that you have a long and very healthy retirement. Thank you. Okay. Those two pages were the one that.
Sorry about that.
The next order of business is the transportation contract extension with West Bus Service.
We've talked about this for a little bit. Um, Jan and I met with them. Uh, they had a, started with an eight percent increase for, uh, the extension. They've got issues with their salaries, with what they bidded at the last time. That's the, on them. Uh, what they're recommending is a two-year, six percent, and then a four percent. If we, uh, the recommendation is to accept the West extension as presented, or we will go back out to bid. It's just our belief right now that the bidding climate would probably not give us the, a better deal. So the recommendation is this. Questions and concerns?
So the fourth bullet, that's a forty-two percent increase. It is.
Fourth one, yeah.
Um, currently, uh, the driver, the driver rate, um, current year is probably two, two fifty, uh, more than what, and that's just salary, only more than what we're currently paying. Getting drivers, the cost, the cost of the drivers, um, benefits, the training. And I know you all see, as you drive between Murphysboro and Carbondale, probably all over, drivers wanted, you know, the bus is out in front. It is not just our district or, you know, Carbondale. It's Southern Illinois trying to find those, those drivers. So having to pay more for those trips, it is, it is a big increase in the last contract. I think we went from eleven, eleven to eleven fifty to twelve over three-year in the contract. And it's, it's, they're just not able to attract those drivers for those hours. Third bullet is a ten percent increase. Right. So what's the overall increase?
Um, sixty-three, well.
I didn't know what, I mean, I count that, I mean, I showed it's gonna be a hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and four dollars more than, than last year.
Added up, um, let's see, I said, and I didn't add these together for this. We went back and forth on, on a ton of things. Um, you know, adding those together, the fifteen, the two.
I did. It's a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Right, over two years.
So where's, where is this increase gonna come from?
Um, transportation dollars, uh, reimbursed, part of that eighty percent from the, from state of Illinois. Um, part of that would be, uh, property tax, property taxes, corporate personal property taxes. But going out for bid, based on some of the other area districts that have gone out for bid and have gotten one bid, when they, when they put those out for bid, and those increases have been fifteen, thirty percent increases, so.
So this says fifteen to twenty percent, but my question is, if we went out for bid, would those other companies provide their own gas? So we pay for the fuel now for West Bus Service.
Right, and, and, and you could do it either way. We used to have that included, and when you do that, you have, um, what's the word I'm trying to think? An escalator, fuel escalator in that contract that will pay up to two fifty, and then the escalator is basically whatever, whatever gas costs right now. So I mean, they're not losing, they're not going to lose money on gas in any contract. It's just how the, the bus, the bus contracts are written. We had it the other way, but when we buy it ourself, we don't have to pay the, the tax on, on the fuel.
Right, but I guess my question is, if we went out for bid, and we weren't responsible for the fuel, would we actually save money, even though this might be more, but we're not having that other expense?
You said you calculated a hundred and twenty-five thousand over two years.
No, over this one, this one year.
Was our total?
No, not a hundred and twenty-five.
Whatever the six, but the forty-two percent was just.
Hour.
It just says the hourly for one year, for seventeen, eighteen years.
Fifteen thousand. That's just the extra trip. Those are just the extra trips.
So when I add the fifteen thousand for one year, the two thousand for the one year, and this says sixty-three thousand over seventeen, eighteen, one year, forty-four thousand over. Yeah, that's one year.
Yeah. No, a hundred and twenty-five over two years. That second one is for the second year. The four percent is the second year, that forty-four thousand.
Okay.
That's year two. So.
Is, is Central States out of the business? Or they moved out of the area? I know they were.
Illinois Central.
Illinois, I'm sorry, Illinois Central.
They are still here. They still have Marion and.
West Frankfurt.
Williamson County Special Ed. Do they still have Frankfurt?
Thought they had Frankfurt still.
Very few schools, but they are not actively bidding bus contracts anymore. They are not coming in and bidding. They are not.
They weren't able to provide the service.
Right, we, yeah, we were not.
Say that again, I'm sorry, Mrs. James.
They weren't able to provide the service that they said they would.
They had ninety-five, didn't they, for a while? They had Carbondale ninety-five, they had Carbondale High School, they had Mass Act. They, they came in hard and, you know, lowballed everybody, got all these contracts. And, and then they didn't bid again, because they lost their shirts. They didn't bid again. Um, so some of the other contract, bus contracts came in. But I mean, we are, we are seeing more and more of those one-contract bidders coming in. And you might have other contractors come to those meetings or express an interest, you know, get a bid packet, and then they don't put a bid in.
Who was, who was trying to go out for bid recently, of the, the districts that you've talked to?
Well, ninety-five went out for bid last year, um, and they got.
One.
Um.
Now, okay, did they try to negotiate with West?
They didn't have West. They had the other one.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
They had, they had, they did have West for a contract in between that. But those, they, I, I don't think, um, I don't think that West wanted to bid that contract, you know, there might have been some issues, there's some personality issues possibly. Um, but I, but I know that there was one contract there, and it was either Mass Act or it was Joppa Main. One of those districts that just went out, received one, also just received one, um, bid when they went out. So that's, so it's a little scary market right now.
What did we pay West total last year?
Oh, I don't have that with me. I know it was, uh, um, probably a million, two million, two. Including the gas or something. Including the gas or something. Yeah, one, yeah.
I think one point two five somewhere.
Yeah, one, I'm thinking one point, one point two, and that doesn't include the gas, because we pay that to the.
So, this first year, eighty thousand, seven fifty-seven, is a fifteen point five percent increase. The second year would be less than that. It'd be probably twelve percent decrease. So, I guess then we're saying, do we accept, you know, the devil we know at fifteen percent, or go out for?
Wait, you're saying fifteen percent on a million dollar con. Because we're saying eighty thousand on a, a million or one point one.
Seven percent, sorry, seven percent. Is that eighty thousand in average per month?
That's normally what we're.
That's over the year. This is using these numbers.
Yeah, that's the, that's the increase. He's talking about the increase.
I was just looking, I'm sorry. I was looking at the bills that we paid, and it was eighty thousand dollars.
That was just some extra trip and, not just extra trip, some, yeah, some additional.
We pay them quarterly or something.
Monthly.
I guess I, like, when there's a problem with the route, is that corrected? Are we having any other problems, any other complaints as we consider this?
I would say there are probably problems with routes at times, but talking to all the other superintendents and bus man, bus, or business managers in the area, it's kind of common that there are problems with routes, different issues with transportation. I mean, that's just one of those things that we continue to try to work with, and you're dealing with drivers, just a different, whole different personalities with, with certain drivers and.
Issues come when there's a sub on the bus. That'll, that'll be when we have a lot of the issues. We haven't had issues with the video cameras in a while. I think maybe two years ago, three years ago, we had a, when we added, when we first added to the bid that all the buses need to have video cameras. There were times that they, they, they weren't able to provide us film when we wanted to look at something. We haven't had issues with that anymore. So, they've been pretty responsive.
My boys ride the bus. I've never had a problem.
And, and I, and I feel like, you know, West Bus definitely is responsive to our concerns and we have concerns. And, you know, we work together very well.
Personally, it makes me nervous as all get out that we can't have competitive bidding, that there's nobody else here. That, that really makes me nervous. I don't like it.
We basically, right now, Durham Bus Service, they were Beck Service before that, and they were something in between Peter, and then something in between. Their, their bidding, you know, they have certain contracts. Illinois Central still has a few. There is a company, Robinson, that does Harrisburg and a few other, you know, just minor district, but they're pretty small. So, there just really aren't a lot of bus contracts out there like there used to be. First Student used to bid on contracts down here. They're really not doing much bidding in the area anymore. I, I just don't think they're, they thought they had enough of a profit margin. So, there's just, there's not a lot. And, and actually, Shawna's here. If you have any questions of Shawna from West Bus, she's in the back of the room.
All right, we're sitting here talking bad about them.
Oh, this kind of leads to one question I had, because when I first read it, I thought, this is legal, right? Because to me, it feels like we're skirting the bidding system.
No, we're not.
By just saying, let's, well, I mean, we're not bidding, we're extending.
No, school code says. Right, school code says, and I, and I talk about school code, that when you have, when you go out for bid, and we have a three-year agreement, you have the option to extend two years, and then you have the option to extend year by year forever, unless someone require, unless you decide you want to bid, or unless another bus contractor comes in and, and demands you to bid. Otherwise.
Okay, I just want to make sure because it doesn't do.
We went year by year for a long time after we hit that two-year bidding, you know, that we do two-year, and then we went year after year after year. A lot of districts do that. And that's another thing we're not seeing, is bus companies coming in and requesting the district's bid. We're, you know, we're not seeing that as much, because that, for a while, when Illinois Central was here, they were everybody. They were hitting everybody. We want you to bid, we want you to bid. And they may not even bid the contract. They may just, you know, require that it go out for bid, and then they didn't show up for the bid. The last, I think they were the ones that, that pushed us out last time, and then they didn't enter a bid.
All right, any other questions or comments from the board? I'm the same way as you, Chrissy. I hate it, but it is what it is sometimes. All right. So, the recommendation from the administration is to accept the contract extension with West Bus Service. I will entertain a motion. Second?
Second.
Nancy?
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, next item is the high school auditorium sound equipment request for proposal.
Yes. We, as you are aware, in order to save money and not pay all the ten percents to the architects and whatnot, we pulled the sound system out of the high school project. We then, we're looking at the, the designs for that, and we wanted to bid that project. So, we asked permission to bid. As we got into the details of actually bidding out that project, we found out that what we want, you can't really bid out for, because that's not the, um.
Intellectual property.
Yeah, the, the, the business plan for BOZI, or whatever that sound system's called, BOZ, thank you. The, um, they don't, they won't let you use or specify their equipment in bids. They want to do requests for proposals. They don't want to cut out their middleman. And so, what we had was, we could get a sound person to do the install. We just couldn't buy the equipment. Buying the equipment and having the guy do the install, it brings you up to the, the, the price of needing to do a bid spec. Well, you can't do a bid spec with the equipment that we want to provide, so what we need to do is a request for services or a request for proposals. And what we do is we go out and we say, we need someone to help us design, and then purchase, and then install said equipment. It's very similar to a bidding process, where you look at various companies that can do this, and then we make the selection of which one we'll go with.
What were the specs that were originally written into the reconstruction of the auditorium that we did pull? Was it this spec?
I don't think it exactly was. I don't think it, I don't think it fit the needs, what we were originally looking at, based on some other area auditorium sound systems that didn't have been installed, and one of the things we.
Well, I know there were some change orders at the end, based upon obsolete model numbers that were in the original spec.
But one of the things that we looked at is other districts that had sound system, I, I don't want to say generic, but maybe a somewhat generic sound system installed, and then had to go back years, you know, a few years later, and make changes to that sound system and spend money to get it up to, you know, when they do their musicals. And, but I know there were at least two, maybe three districts that we talked to about, about that. And trying to get that, if we're going to build this Center for Performing Arts, and, you know, we want a sound system that, two years later, we're not going to have to go, gosh, this, this really isn't what we envisioned or what we really wanted. It felt like that there could be a savings, you know, rather than throwing this in with the whole, you know, the general contractor, you know, has, and the sub, they all have their, their profit built in, as they should on, on any bid process, a way to get exactly what we want and, and save money at the same time. And we did contact legal on, on this, and, you know, looked at all the school code requirements, and, you know, there is an exception based on the kind of, you know, the components and the computer, all the computer processes and, and to be able to do an RFP on this rather than a bid process. So, we'll still be looking at cost and, you know.
Why the fixation on BOZ?
I don't know. I can't, I can't answer that.
Is that what they replaced? You said they replaced.
It's, it's one of five premier sound providers. It's.
I know that's something, you know, Mr. Carrington and, you know, had some guidance from, I guess, from various sound people.
It really came down, when, working with Jessica, she knows exactly what she wants. She's worked with the other drum people from like Marion, and everyone that's been installed has needed to have changes. It just, it's, it's, so she knows exactly what she's want. She's worked with the sound people before as to what she needs with the wireless mics and the other non-wired mics and whatnot, and I, I don't know why they're fixated on BOZ. I do know that they are.
But I guess it's just beats.
It's my understanding, like, like, if, if, you know, High Tech or Sound Core, I mean, those are some of the local ones that I know of that will be able to provide these services. And then we would choose which one we have. I don't know if, if, if one of them, if they're both BOZ or they're not, or if, even if there's those dealers would say, you know what, a Yamaha will work too, and I've got a dealer that can do that, and we can save money on that. I mean, there's a, what we found was the specs that we had said for what we want, we can't bid for, so.
So, on this RFP, that's just strictly that, like, we want them to design a BOZ system?
Very much like when we went and looked out, I don't know if you were on the board, when we went and looked for a new architect. You know, you, you say, we, we need a, an organization that can provide this service, and then we had applicants, and we interviewed them, and we looked at their, their specs.
So, I mean, if we get a sound person that comes in, say, Eddie from High Tech comes in and says, I can, I can design your auditorium, but Yamaha will do the same thing and save you money. That, that's not in here. It has to be a BOZ.
No, with this, that's, that's just the, the issue. That name is the issue that we came up across. If they come up with another system, and Jessica's fine with it, and it works into the sound specs, I'd be okay with it.
So, part of their design process could give us their expertise to change.
So, it's not, you're not set on that one, is what you're saying.
Well, originally, we were, originally we were, but now we can't. Originally, we were just getting one, just to be BOZ, just give us bids for BOZ. But now, we can't do that, so we're actually going to have to get the providers to use other companies' equipment.
No, I think, no, they could still use BOZ.
No, I'm saying it still could use, but it's not going to be limited to.
Right.
But before, we were limited to.
They're going to design the system for us, is what.
Yes.
And about how much is this going to cost? I think we were looking at equipment, one twenty-five in equipment. And that includes the installation and everything?
I didn't think it did.
That just can't possibly.
I thought last month, we, somebody told us sixty, and I said, really? And Steve came in and said ninety.
Yes.
And maybe the one twenty-five was with the labor. Maybe that's what I'm thinking.
That's, that's probably just the equipment.
I feel like this is something that's kind of already done, because Steve probably put his work into it to decide what we needed, and that's how we came up with a hundred and twenty-five. So, is this really just kind of a formality? If Steve sat down with somebody and saying, this is what we need you to work up? Is that basically what?
We've had a lot of meetings with Steve Seifer, the architect, and Jessica, and they've worked up what they would like to see. And then.
But now we need to have somebody formally do that.
Yes.
Not an employee. That's what's happening.
Yes, because when we tried to do it the other way, we found that we were starting to run into obstacles that were.
Well, in doing this.
This is the process that gets us legally to do it.
We might find a way to get this equipment, and we might find someone to install it, but without going through this process, and without having, what do they say, a licensed dealer or whatever, the equipment's not going to be warranted. And that's not something we want, is to end up with a, you know, expensive equipment that's not under any kind of warranty whatsoever. So, we're trying to, you know, get a good sound system, good install, have it all warranted, by, you know, license, insurance, you know, carrying adequate insurance. So, we'll be looking at all those things with the RFP, not just bottom dollar. What are the references? You know, what have they done? Are they paying prevailing wage on their jobs? All those different criteria.
And then, refresh my memory, we pulled it out for, you're not paying what, architect?
Ten percent architect fees, and then there's the contractors would take, cut of that. We, we pulled it out for the savings that we would have, and then we also just knew that when the, like Marion High School, they had to come back in and redo their sound. We didn't want to have to go through that process.
All right, any other questions or comments from the board? All right, you've heard the recommendation then to, for the high school auditorium sound equipment request for proposal. I will entertain a motion. And a second?
Second.
Nancy?
I'll wait. She can do a voice on this one.
You got a role down here.
I do?
Yes, you better wait. This should be a role.
So, it was James and Beaver?
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Beaver?
Yeah.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving into new business, and the first item is student fees.
Yes.
Which is eight on your sheet, but.
And it's employer four, as far as what they are presented as. As we've been reviewing board policy and getting more I's dotted and T's crossed, annually, we need to bring to the board prior to registration, the fees. So, I'm bringing forward all of the fees. Registration last year was forty-five dollars. A few years ago, we brought to the board kind of a multi-year plan for registration fees. So, we are recommending a fifty dollar registration fees, all the other costs for the different classes, the other fees are the same. And so, we're just bringing this forward for your approval, and that's the recommendation.
Do these fees, I assume they get spent that semester or whatever, that year?
It goes into the, the activity account for the.
But it has to be spent.
The class, and they spent it, yes.
The activity account with the class, you know, the, every class, you know, Foods Class Auto, Auto Shop, they all have an expense account as well, but they pay, they pay for their expenses.
And they can't, but I'm just saying, like, the money can't roll over from fiscal year to fiscal year.
Occasionally, it does. I mean, if the auto shop doesn't have the, you know, expenses one year, they.
So, I guess my question would be then, like, if we're charging a student a fee, we should make sure that they benefit from that fee that they're paying. So, if they, if it rolls over into another semester, they've not.
You're saying the account can roll over, but chances are the money they're putting in the account with this is less than what they spend within that year, because they do other fundraising checks.
It depends from class to class. Like, for Foods Class, the, the money that we receive, it just depends, because where, where your fee waivers fall, because you have some classes where there are a ton of fee waivers, and so you don't have a lot going into those, those accounts, and the district ends up supplementing a lot of money. And some of the others that maybe don't have as many fee waivers, you may end up not spending every dollar in that account every year.
But it's minimal, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I looked on Carbondale High School's website, and they provide one PE uniform to all freshmen and new transfer students. That's what it says. You say no?
They might. Have a lot of money.
Yes, they do. So, I guess for our students, if they, they would just apply for a waiver, then if they can't, okay.
Anyone else? All right, the recommendation is to adopt the fee schedule as presented. I will entertain a motion for that. And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the approval. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Joey, you needed to go. No, no, I did. I'm sorry. I should have remembered. She now has to go print those to get them out. Okay, next item of business under new business is the approval of the concussion team.
Yes, and there is one change to what's presented in front of you. Obviously, I want to change the name Tony Wilson to, to be determined.
You're not coming back just for that?
It's, it's. We, we discussed him being on our concussion team while he's at Pickneyville.
Because heaven forbid if we play Pickneyville, everybody would be concussed.
Exactly. Although, although, although great ones would be.
Tell me, MHS Counseling Department, that means both of them, all of them, everybody, some of them?
No, it'd be one.
One member, okay, so representative for us, okay.
I believe they have to go with who gets the shortest straw.
That'd be Dana.
Yeah, but they have to go through some kind of training.
Right.
Every one of them.
Yes.
That's why they get the shortest straw.
That's true. All right, you've heard the recommendation for the concussion team from administration. I'll entertain a motion to approve that team as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The renewal of the IHSA membership for 2018, 2019. This is an annual.
This is an annual, and the recommendation is to continue with IHSA.
And there's no cost?
There is not. I still need your approval.
All right, you've heard the recommendation to renew our IHSA membership. I will entertain a motion to do so. And a second? Mr. Corley? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Building staff needs, this is informational.
What I am handing out is the main, not indicators, factors that go into the evidence-based funding model. I'm going to briefly talk to you about these. I did get from every building kind of what they would love to see, and we are in needing of staffing. But as we move forward to this grand plan of how we're going to bring things back, I want to talk about what the new funding model kind of discusses. Core teachers, those are teachers that teach the reading, writing, and arithmetic. They want to fund us based. Um, they want to fund us based on our student size, so they're gonna look at the number of kindergarten teachers, or number of kindergarteners. And say, we want them fifteen per class. How many teachers would you need to be at fifteen? You can see that their target is for kindergarten through third grade, fifteen per class, fourth through fifth grade, twenty per class, and sixth through twelfth grade, twenty per class. So really, fourth through twelfth, they're looking at twenty per class and K through three, fifteen per class. To accomplish this, um, not only will we need to hire a bunch of staff, but we do need to add on to the buildings. Okay? Specialist teachers, those are teachers like music, PE, the ones that are the specials. Uh, they suggest twenty percent of the core teachers in the building. So at the general, right now, we've got seven in each grade level. That's twenty-one core teachers, seven kindergarten, seven first, seven second. That would mean that we would probably twenty percent of that would give us around four specials should be our target at the general. We have three. We have three at Carruthers, we have five at the middle school and we have eleven. I I gotta add Spanish to the high school. That was one of the things that I missed on that list. As you look at that, it's it's the exploratories at the high school that really kind of give us over numbers there. Um, as you go down, instructional facilitators, coaches, these would be instructional coaches, uh, we have none of those. Everybody that we have is currently teaching. Core intervention teachers, we have reading specialists at the general, Johnny Logan, um, and one at Carruthers. Each specialist has three aides that are assigned to them. Those are for reading interventions. They do, um, small group and targeted assistance there. We need a math interventionist. We've got no real targeted groups for math and we probably need more aides. That was some of the the comments that were brought up there. I did include the ELL teacher as a pseudo-interventionist that that goes to the high school and the middle school and a paraprofessional. At the general and Carruthers and that's because there's really no place in here that the ELL person met and he's kind of. Like a reading specialist where they pull out and they do interventions, groups. Uh, substitutes are gonna try and fund you for ten days per teacher. Core guidance. They would like to see, based on our numbers, um, a few more guidance counselors. I believe they would like three at our high school, based on our high school numbers. We have two at our high school. We have one at the middle school who's actually a certified teacher and she's, it's, uh, Mrs. Cochran. She's serving as a kind of a guidance scheduling, uh, test monitor role. And then we've got two student advocates at Carruthers and generals which are non-certified employees filling those roles. So, um, they would prefer us having guidance counselors down in the elementaries, certified guidance teachers. This is what we have. Nurse. We have one full-time school nurse and one part-time school nurse. Actually, it's two full-time employees, but one of our nurses spends her mornings going over certified nursing assistants. She's the teacher at the high school for our CNA program. Supervisory aides, those would be our monitors. We had one at the general, one at Carruthers and one at the middle school. This was in the needs assessment. Lot of concerns, how are we going to replace those people? The monitors at the buildings fill a role. Each building kind of fills it a little bit differently, but it's definitely, uh, people that pick up the slack and 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 get things done. Librarians, they'd like to see us having a librarian in every library, along with a library aide in every library. Uh, right now, we have two librarians. We're fortunate to have two librarians. A lot of districts don't have certified librarians because they're. Hard to get certified in the library science right now. So library aide, media techs, we have two paraprofessionals. They work hand in hand with the librarians at the other buildings. Principals, we're supposed to have four, one for each building. We have four. Assistant principals, they would like us to have one at each building based on our student numbers. We have two deans, uh, one at the high school, one at the middle school. Both of our deans do have a type seventy-five. They are certified for administration. They just happen to be part of the bargaining unit. Uh, secretarial staff, uh, two at the general, two at Carruthers, three at the middle school, three at the high school. Gifted, none. Professional development, we have our half-days and our Friday early releases. Instructional materials, we're starting to bring back our textbook adoption cycles and, um. Assessments, we added the map assessment. We've got the Ames Web and the Star. Computer technology is probably one of our stronger suits. We have a lot of bandwidth and we have a lot of labs. And one of the things that every building is saying is we need more, more Chromebook labs that can be brought in. Student activities, those would include the bands, the choirs, all of those extras, extracurricular things. We have a lot of those as well. Maintenance and operations, and in our building needs, I had a lot of teachers or a lot of the the buildings say that we do need more custodial help. Ironically, the two buildings that are the oldest screamed at the loudest that we need more custodial help. Right now, we have one day custodian at each building and then I've got written down there what the night custodians are. That's been cut quite a bit. We've got four maintenance, two for grounds, one HVAC control person and one working foreman. Central office, we've got the superintendent, the business manager, the chief information officers, two accounting staff, two secretarial staffs, one IT professionals, that's Kevin. Then they look at your benefits. They look at your poverty rate, your English language rates. They they factor in a lot of those things. Next on the list is special education teachers. At the general, we have two self-contained classrooms and three resource teachers. Carruthers, four self-contained, four resource. Middle school, four self-contained, three and a half resource. High school, seven and a half special education teachers. That's twenty-eight special education teachers. If you jump over psychologists and look at our aides, we've got twenty-six special education aides within the district. When Jan was first kind of looking at this model, she commented that we spent five hundred thousand dollars more than they would expect on special ed. We spend, uh, a lot more than that, less on on regular ed. Uh, when we start looking at the gap, gap analysis, I wanna be very, very clear. We are not overstaffed with special ed. My special ed teachers are not sitting there with nothing to do. Okay? So I'm not, I'm not saying that at all. Uh, the conundrum that we have is, um, we are identified by the state as over-identified in special ed. Uh, whenever you look in an average, you're gonna have outliers. We are outlying on the high side. That's the defense to why we have so many of these identified children causing us to have so many of these staffs. Cause quite honestly, we could add more special ed teachers based on the number of kids we have and the services they require. Uh, the issue that it, that I think we need to really take a look at is what are we doing with our core programs? Because, um, when students leave our district and they go to Carbondale, they go to Marion, or they go to Kentucky, we see them coming back. And when they come back, they have no IEP. They go to other districts, they get their IEP dropped, they're in regular ed classrooms and then when they come back to us, we identify them again.
Because the other districts are trying to save money.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
Um, and so we need to then understand that we're okay with our numbers being over-identified. But there is that philosophy that if we can get our class sizes down to fifteen theoretically. Could we reduce the number of special ed students that were having to identify because we're able to do more earlier interventions? If we had a math interventionist, would that help our numbers? I I, you know, there are some. Some ways that I think that we're gonna need to start really looking at our, uh, core curriculum.
But this, this model doesn't take into account our number of students with IEPs at all. It doesn't look at that. It, it looks at, you know, the the ideal situation and what adequacy means with all these, you know, twenty-six data points. And that we need fifty-seven to fifty-eight percent adequacy. So every dollar that gets added to that evidence-based model funding, the new model. Um, you know, brings us a little bit closer to adequacy, but we have a long way to go before we, before we hit that adequacy. So, so, you know, the the core teachers, what do we say, uh, based on what the state? You know, there's a whole, I did a webinar on this. There's a whole, um, you put all these data points in and it tells you how many teachers that we should have. Thirty core teacher, and we're thirty core teacher short, K, K twelve in this district to get to a hundred percent adequacy in that area. Some areas, we're a little closer to adequacy. Um, we don't fall as short in some of those areas. Where we do fall short is our average salary across the board at everything. Um, and that's based on the state, the state salary average, not looking at the highest or, I mean, average, average teacher salary. We're ten to a thousand dollars lower than the state average. And that's not the kind of thing that we can make up overnight. It's just, that's, this is, Mr. Grody's, um, you know, handing this out is kind of the start of the conversation for us. You know, as we potentially ever get that new money we're talking about. Where, you know, what are our needs? Where does it go first? Because as you can see on this list, we have so many. But, um, and obviously, we can't cover all these things at once. But as, as we get closer to that adequacy and if they, the state continues to pump money into the funding formula. And that money goes to, we're a tier one school, goes to us first and a little bit to tier two. Those three and four schools in Chicago and the Collar Counties, they're getting point one percent of that money. They're gonna get nothing of that that new money because they have what they need. But it's, it's gonna be baby steps to get us to to adequacy. But, um, you know, the the new money, if we get seven hundred thousand dollars this year, like we're, they've told us we will, that's one little baby step towards. Um, you know, meeting, maybe we'll go up to fifty-eight and a half or fifty-nine percent. But, um, this is, this is a great start to the conversation, but we still have a lot to do.
Now, in April, we're gonna see, we're, we're, they're talking about giving us the number that we will receive of the new money that they're giving out this year. Or are they going to be able to tell us at that point, uh, and what fully funded is? Will we ever be able to say that that, that to run our programs right here based on our numbers, to be fully funded, they should have to give us this amount of money? Because to to staff it, given these indicators, the state's gonna have to give us a lot more money.
Fully funded is years and years away. I don't know that we'll see it while we're working here. I don't know.
Oh, we'll be more.
Because it means pumping that, they're talking about putting three hundred and fifty million dollars into the system this year in order to to give us those additional distributions. Are they, is the state gonna be able to do that every year? And that's the question. That's the model and that's the promise, but that's kind of the question. Will that, will that happen? And where does that additional revenue come from every year to be able to continue to support education, to move us towards adequacy? It's a great model. Don't get me wrong. It is, it's a fabulous model. But the the revenue stream has to be there to to put that into that so we can get to that thirty additional core teachers that we need.
But as we're looking at this and we are moving forward, trying to, uh, find those savings as you hold our feet to the fire. We need to start really looking at these indicators and 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 putting our money where we believe is the best for the biggest bang. And right now, looking at a gap analysis, um, I think we do special ed very, very well. But I think what we need to do is is focus in on that, that regular ed, um, as well and start looking at our class sizes there and some of our instructional intervention, so.
Lot of information.
Lot of information. Please take this home and read it. Email me or call me if you have questions or concerns about some of the details. And we will talk more.
All right. Next item of business is. To amend the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school calendar. It's enclosure number three.
This is a yearly activity. What we do is, uh, when we're sure there's no more snow days, and I I chuckle because we had snow today. But knock on wood, no more snow days. We look at the end of the year and we try and figure out what makes the most sense. And right now, what makes the most sense is our, coming after our three-day weekend, the the Memorial Day weekend. We would like Tuesday to be that half-day, so we'd like to move the Friday to that Tuesday. And then, uh, Wednesday will be the teacher institute day and that will be the last day of school officially. The last day of student attendance would be the Tuesday after Memorial Day weekend.
So the only thi-
Say a couple things. Um, right now, we still have last day of student attendance is May thirtieth in that gray box, so that'd have to be revised. And then.
In the, in the book, you're waiting to get to that.
And then Mike, so how do we disseminate this then? I mean, does this physical copy go out or I don't know what the buildings do?
To communicate it to the families?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, what have we done in the past, Carla?
And then the little asterisk on the twenty-fifth, I guess, needs to come off, right? To show that that's no longer a half-day and that's being moved to the twenty-ninth?
It's a little squiggly in the one I'm looking at.
That's a two-thirty.
Oh, okay.
It's a two-thirty.
Gotcha, all right.
I'm just wanting to get on this document then. I don't know if this physical copy goes out or gets posted. If you can put the graduation times on here too.
Okay.
So really, student attendance, if they attend, is on Tuesday the twenty-ninth.
Yes. And that would be a half-day.
Right. Right.
Um, Kristy? You said something before about how there's a gray box. Last day.
In the middle of the.
Still says last day.
Says first day, so attendance is last day.
And do you put, repost this new one on the website in addition to all that?
Yes. Yes.
Graduation's at six. My glory's at eleven.
And graduation is six.
Eleven and six.
All right, any other comments, questions? Then I will entertain a motion to approve the amended school calendar as presented. And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the authorization to purchase computer technology equipment and upgrades.
Do you want me to take this?
Yes.
This, this has become an annual, an annual thing for us as a way to upgrade and keep our computers, printers, projectors. Up to date, our technology, as we know, um, that changes pretty quickly, those, you know, the needs and, um, that equipment gets out of date fairly, fairly quickly. Uh, classroom computers and and whatnot. So we've been in the cycle of of approving purchase of computer tech, computer and technology equipment yearly. And paying for that through a lease purchase agreement. And how that works is part of our levy is a nickel levy basically for the, for leases that falls under the ONM fund. So we levy that each year and then we pay for that through, um, leases. And we currently have, I think we have three existing leases, two that are actually with, um, First Bank and Trust and one with. I can't think of the name of the company, but it's another, um, a company who, this, Great Amer- Great America specializes in leases, um, lease purchases to schools such as this. Uh, but the process, should the board approve to allow us to purchase equipment, is, um, to go out for the best interest rate. Basically quotes local banks and through these approved leasing companies and find the the best interest rate to pay back the fifty thousand over five years. I know it seems like five years is kind of a long, um, a long period to pay back five years over, but we have a schedule of, um, you know, the, the revenue each year. Basically, a cost analysis at every year, what our lease payments are, what our, what our, um, revenue, tax levy revenue coming in is. And the paybacks on all those periods and, uh, fifty thousand is, that's what we can do right now to get, you know, to get the new technology and to have the funds for this payback period. And we, I think when we, when we started doing this, we kind of had it, looked at it as a ten-year, you know, what did our ten-year process look like for, for introducing new technology? Some of the years have been two hundred thousand, one seventy-five, when we had those big needs. And what I had said to Steve and and Kevin, w- working on the technology is, if we do those big bumps now, we're gonna have to drop down to where fifty's the most we can do over these years. So that's the point we're at, um, looking to replace computers, printers, projectors, Elmos, um, and the miscellaneous cables and mounts. And, um, as noted, as we talked about the, um, sound system equipment, the computer technology in the school code, there is an exception to the bidding requirement. So what we always do is go out and look for the lowest, bang for our buck with, um, you know, they know who those vendors are who are gonna give us the best prices. And go through that process and obtain those quotes. and go through that process and obtain those quotes. And if the board approves the purchases, um, make those purchases and, um, then, uh, you know, work on the financing.
How much was approved last year, how much did it be last year?
I think it wa- it was one seventy-five, I think, last year. Steve, Steve's not here, it's just sort of for me to look up into the eye in the sky, um, Kevin's here. But I, I believe it was a lot, it may, and it may have even been a hundred, I, I mean, I can check on it, I'll let you know. But we have, we have had this cycle, um, going for quite some time.
So then-
Here, here, do you remember what, what the, what we financed last year with our payments? I've, I'm, pardon, I've slept way too-
You're close, but I-
I've slept way too many times.
I'm saying at what point do the payments you make yearly on, if you're doing it yearly and you're paying payments on five different leases from the past five years, it just makes sense for you to be paying for it within the fiscal year that you're lying in?
We may get to that point, but we've got the, we've got the, the levy, you know, we had kind of a buildup in our, in our levy fund. So, um, we were initially doing three-year leases to, um, you know, to, uh, pay those, you know, spend that money a little quicker because we needed to, you know, we're, we're basically, that's an as-needed levy or we're, we're levying that nickel every year, but at some point you have to start spending that down. So, I mean, there may become a point, there may come a point that it does make more sense, but we have, it's about seventy-five, seventy-five, eight, maybe eighty thousand dollars a year that we're, that we're getting through that levy.
So aside from, aside from obviously having fifty thousand dollars worth of new equipment, um, what, what benefits do we not see if we don't, you know, lend fifty thousand dollars this year?
Um, it's, well, not having the updated equipment is-
I mean, aside from that, just, just not borrowing the money, are we leaving money on the table with that?
No, I mean, we're not, we're not gonna leave it on, it, it would stay, you know, it's only, it can only be spent for those purposes though, for lease, for lease purposes. Because that's a levy, it's a lease, it's a lease purchase levy.
Start building up the fund balance.
Yeah, you have your fund balance, you could maybe do more, maybe do more next year. But, I mean, as far as that, it's, it's not, it can't, and, and it can be spent, it wouldn't be only for technology. That's just a need that we've had, so we've kind of earmarked that levy and that, those proceeds to trying to keep technology up. I think in the past-
Lockers we've done.
We did lockers, um, replaced some PE lockers, so I mean, there are limited things you could do with that. Um, and, you know, we've stayed within the law to be able to, to make some of those purchases and, um, you know, utilize our cash flow, especially in years when, um, we weren't able to purchase some of those things that we needed outright.
So I assume the goal is just to have this done before fall?
Yeah.
Okay, so-
Typically do the work over the summer and-
If we're getting that new money, couldn't we just then just pay cash and not have to have a, pay interest on something?
You could, but then you have that, I mean, you have that money sitting there. I mean, that's, that's the whole purpose of that, of doing that nickel levy is-
But we're, it's not really, it's, it's not saving us any money because we're having to pay interest on it.
You are paying some interest, yes. But again, those, that is a thing, um, has benefited us in those years, cash flow purposes, when we didn't have, you know, two hundred thousand dollars.
Right, what she's saying, I guess, if, if we have the cash available, pay the fifty, let the fifty rack up in the fund balance. So if we have a time where we need to use those for cash flow, it's there.
Right.
Or now, we're not necessarily get our, we're, we're lending, we're still building up that amount, but we're doing it by lending versus cash flow.
But I don't currently have that written to my budget for that fifty this year, so that's, that's what you're saying, you would rather wait and assume that we're gonna get it?
Well, I mean, we can always in August, right? Go get a, go get a lease in, or July and put it in.
Pay it off.
But, but that work gets done over the summer though.
Cause what I mean, do it in the summer, as it gets closer to fall, if we don't have the money by June or July.
What you're saying is table it for a couple of months until we see what the-
Yeah, and if we get that money, then we-
Money's coming in.
But you need the authorization to purchase it now, so the work will be done.
Right, authorization to purchase the equipment now so we can get the equipment. Because if we, if we, if we don't do it over the summer, it doesn't get installed till, you know, next break, till next summer, that kind of thing.
Right, no, I get doing it over the summer, I'm just saying if, I mean, it's March right now. How much time do you need to, you know, if you know what you need, how long does it take to, I mean?
If we found out in April, we voted in May, would that still give us enough time? I guess, obviously you don't have to bid on this, but if we're just allowing up to fifty and, you know, we, we, Mr. Carrington gets the numbers back and he says thirty-five, seven will do it.
Well, he'll spend up to fifty, he'll buy enough, you know, if, if we say fifty, we'll buy more computers to get to fifty. I mean, we will spend-
So what's the actual need?
We will spend, uh-
What's the dollar amount that's the need? If we say if we have fifty, we're gonna spend fifty, what if it was one fifty, would we need to spend one fifty?
I told him you had fifty, I'm sure he could have spent three times that on, to get the computer equipment that we need. Because we, like I said, what, what have we got? I said, well, all I can do in a lease purchase levy is fifty this year. So that, I'm not saying that's the need, that's not, I'm sure that's not the need. There's always much more we need to replace equipment. And I can't say how old those computers are, right?
And I think, I get what you're saying, the, the problem is, is that the need and then the revenue source. Because this money's there from the nickel levy and it can only be spent on leased stuff, I mean, we can build up the fund balances. The, the, you know, the need to be able to spend that nickel levy because it can only be done on that, that lease is different than, you know, wanting to pull it out of the ed fund. Does that make sense? So it's, uh, it's, it's the fact that you've got these, this restricted dollars that can go toward a lease instead of being pulled out of the ed fund.
But I can't, what he's saying is it would be nice to know what the actual need is, even if it's four hundred thousand dollars worth of-
If you said the need was two hundred and fifty thousand to, for Mr. Carrington to say this is how much we need to end, but all we're going to do right now is fifty thousand, I'd be like, it makes sense, I mean, we're, we're making do, I'm just seeing fifty thousand, I have no idea what the need is.
And I don't know what the need is either, I just know this is, every year, we try to, we're in a replacement cycle. Um, I know this doesn't touch what the needs are, I'm sure a lot of you teachers have computers in your classrooms that need replaced and aren't getting replaced. I, but like I said, I don't, that, that's not what we've ever done before, is okay, we need to get this many up to date, um, because we haven't ever had unlimited resources.
That's my, my favorite saying right there. But, but the thing about it is, is I think by, by having that, by having that, by, by having the, the need in front of you, you can make educated, informed decisions instead of just saying, we've always put money out there and then they spend it.
I think it goes back to just having a plan in place of knowing what needs to, like what the needs are versus what the wants are. So we can try to get through the list of needs and start focusing on the, on the extras so that, but we don't ever know what the needs, I mean, we don't ever know what any of that is. I don't feel like I do.
Right, our plan with the lease purchase process, because we've, we have been in a cycle, this is what we can do and this is, this is the most we can do with this pool of money because we can't spend this on salaries or on other things. We've identified this as a way to keep up with our technology. It may be five hundred thousand dollars. I mean, we'd like to do, we talked about doing a one-to-one solution. Um, obviously, we can't do that with, with fifty thousand dollars. This is just a way to bring some, um, some of our equipment up to, the oldest equipment, up to current, current standard or current technology.
So the fifty thousand essentially is just the number you put out there that would still put us underneath that umbrella of-
It's all I could pay for with a lease purchase levy.
We're not, we're not looking at what our need is and then trying to fund it. What we're doing is we're looking at what our funds are with the restricted money and then saying, how could we spend it based on our needs for the stuff that's, that's there? And I, I get what you're saying about that plan and looking forward, um, and we can put something together. We, we, we have in the past had a needs assessment and, and Mr. Carrington would sit with a committee of teachers and they'd go over the needs assessment survey, we'd go out, um, in the, the last five or so many years of proration, we just haven't been able to do that anymore. But that would have been a comprehensive list of needs that we did maybe seven to eight years ago as far as technology throughout the district. And then he would add on the servers and things of that nature.
I still think there's a technology committee that he meets.
I think he's met with them recently.
He hasn't met with them this year technology.
Because we haven't had the money to be able to buy a lot of that stuff. And so what it is, is he, he has an idea of what, you know, who needs the, uh, the, the smart boards and things of that nature, what servers need to be upgraded, uh, you know, what network hubs need to be changed out. But then there's also Chromebooks and things of that nature. I mean, the needs are going to, right now, completely outweigh what we can afford on them. So what we're doing is we're tacking it from the other side, we've got this nickel levy, we can't spend on anything else. And so we know we can spend it on technology, there's no lockers that we need to build right now, there's nothing else that we could spend it on. And so we're looking for that fifty thousand to be put on that.
I think some of that comes like having that forward thinking of the thing, having known what the needs are, cause I know I've talked with PTO members that, at general, you know, they, they raise sometimes twenty-five thousand dollars in a year, so there's some of this. They could probably, if you said, we really need, you know, iPads for K through three, something like that. But they're like, we don't, nobody ever really comes to us, aside from just the, you know, the, 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 the class allotments they give each class and then come up with their own, hey, what can we spend? And that's obviously from the teachers saying, here's what we need, but there's still money left in the year. And if you had a, you know, if they were saying, we could really use Chromebooks at this level, this is how much they cost, parents, teachers get together for the PTO side of it and say, if we could raise twenty-five thousand, now you've got, you know, the ability to go to Grandma and Grandpa when you're doing the fundraiser with a reason why we're raising money as said from, we received five fundraiser things in the mail today or, you know, from little junior and-
And we did that one year on the PTO there, were, were you, was, but that might have been the last time.
Yeah.
The iPad.
Cart and the iPads.
Well, we've got, um, as far as staffing and, and they did add some things like computers and whatnot from the teachers. We can send out the survey again and in a month, we can have the, a cost analysis of what it would be to, to, to staff everything the way it is. The, um, evidence-based funding model, the indicators, is kind of that first step of starting that conversation. Looking at our complete needs of what we would have to do to, to, to get there. I just, um, we can get a total cost on that. Put it, dollars to everything that they've kind of i- itemized out and whatnot, number of aides, what would take the staff on all of that stuff and get the cost. The, the thing is then, we have to then weigh both of those and try and figure out strategically, what do we bring first, you know? And, and without a formalized plan, that's kind of what we've done with this nickel levy. We know that this is restricted funds.
So he does, so he does have a plan basically on how he replaces things and-
Yeah, a rotation cycle, it just, yeah.
Any other comments, questions? All right, then we, the recommendation from administration is to authorize to purchase computer technology equipment and upgrades. And I will- In a second, that was quick. Nancy?
Mrs. James? Yes. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yeah.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Rundy?
Yes, motion carries. Item, the next item is the lease purchase agreement to finance.
Given the permission to buy, we would like permission to go on to lease.
Yep. Entertain a motion unless there's questions. Second. Nancy? Go ahead.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorr?
No.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
And Mr. Lee?
Yes, motion carries. All right. We're getting closer, folks. Next item of business is an agreement with Emmanuel Lutheran School for Power School. This is informational.
Yeah, and I, basically what I wanna do is before we put a lot of effort into coming up with an intergovernmental agreement with Emmanuel Lutheran, I want to take a straw poll to see if philosophically anyone's against it. Basically, Power School is our new program that allows us to do student information. And Emmanuel Lutheran, Lutheran has approached us and said they would like to, uh, utilize that program. They would pay us per student the cost of them using that program. We would benefit by, when those kids do come over to our district, we have that information. You know, we would, they would be a subgroup within the Power School account. And so we'd be able to separate them out quite easily for all of our state reports and whatnot. But then when they do come over, we'd have that historical data that can then roll over into our own system. It is a, uh, a, a, a win-win in my opinion, it's good for Emmanuel Lutheran, it's good for us. Uh, we would be able to see their student data, which is why we would need an intergovernmental agreement and all of those other things. And so before we got down to the brass tacks of getting the legal involved and really doing that, I want to make sure that I'm not putting something together for something that we shouldn't be able to-
When I assume that would mean they could see our data too, right?
No.
Just, we could see theirs, but-
Yes.
Who, who would assist, like when they had tech problems, um, who would assist them with that? And then would the district bill them for that time that the person from the district assisted them or how would that work?
Their tech problems would be, I guess, training issues or how to use the, the programs, cause they're-
Or when something goes wrong and something doesn't work.
Yeah, uh, Steve would have to go over there and we would, we'd be able to be able to build on to that.
So they would be billed for his time from away, away from the district?
That would be an item that we could add to the agreement.
And other than the data, what other benefit would we have to do this? Can you think of anything else?
Uh, on the list, Steve's got branding, you know, they would, you can't take the Murphy's Borough logo off of it. So all of the Emmanuel parents that go into Power School to see their kids' grades would be able to see the Murphy's Borough logo, but-
They're gonna have to go here and-
Yeah, I, I don't know what value that-
So, so they would get that at cost and then they would pay for-
Any additional needs that they-
But then training, like she mentioned, training would also be at their cost.
Right. Or they would come over and we would, uh, and, and they would, they would be involved in the training that we're already doing and we could-
That they would be charged or no?
Yeah.
Yeah? I don't know, you're taking the public fund for a private school, that's, that's, that's kind of the problem I have.
I, I think that would be-
So I would want them to be charged.
Cost of the tax service, we can charge them. Do whatever we want, that's why I'm, I'm getting the input, so I know kind of the box by which to-
And I think, I think you need to have that within the agreement of a hourly rate for certain individuals who would be training, doing problem solving.
That would have to be-
Help line. You wanna call Nancy?
Give a B Joe.
Or when they say-
If she retires from I M R, she could train them.
What my password is or whatever.
I just don't want there to be any cost to the district or-
No cost to the district.
A private school to have the service.
And we're sure that this is allowed?
Yeah. Okay. At least I will be before we enter the final agreement. But right now, everything that I've looked at, it is allowed. I will look forward, that'll be an action item next month.
Okay, that's it. No, that was informational.
Okay.
All right, we have a need to go into closed session.
Make the motion to go into closed session pursuant to section two of the open meetings act five, Illinois statute one twenty-two C, to review the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees at the district including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity.
Nancy?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorr?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
And Mr. Rundy?
Yes, motion carries, let's take-